Three, five, four, three, two, one.
All right, I'll call the city council meeting to order for the city of Holiday Island. This is May eighteenth, or...
No, it's June.
How about me looking at the agenda? This is June fifteenth. Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wes, can you take role?
Yes. Councilmember Dumas.
Here.
Councilmember Elwin.
Here.
Councilmember Graves.
Here.
Councilmember Mills.
Here.
Councilmember Pittman.
Here.
All present, Mr. Mayor.
All right, I'll declare a quorum. We'll move on to approving the agenda. Just make sure everybody's got the latest version. I had the numbers on the ordinances backwards on the, on the original agenda. So, OO five is salary and municipal property. OO four is fire protection. So, that's the version of the agenda we should be looking at. Any questions on the agenda?
I, I would like to talk about the budget sometime. Do we need to have that as an agenda item? Or, you know, we, you know, we talked about it, but we never revised it. You know, after, after we, you know, basically, we didn't, didn't start anything until April.
Yeah.
And some of the stuff you, you brought to us today is based on the budget that we had going for twelve months.
Yes, I, I agree. In fact, Wes and I talked about that.
I don't, I don't think we can do it at this meeting, probably because I, I think it needs to be revised.
Yes, I, I, you know, as long as we don't overspend the budget, technically, we, we don't need to redo the budget.
Well, I don't, how do you know if you overspent it when you, you projected three months' income that you don't have?
I've, I've done projections and, um, our projected revenue and the expenses that we're talking about so far, we're well within our means available.
That's not available to us, though, to see what, you know, if, if we're, if we're making expenditures based on budget, we don't have any, the rest, we don't have anything to refer to, okay? I, I, and, and I have some issues with some of the stuff we're getting to, projecting to do today because we don't, I don't know where that fits in.
Well, um, you know.
So, I guess, I guess, can, can we do that for the next meeting then? Or, I don't think, we can't do it today, I understand that.
Well, normally, it's my opinion that you amend the budget when your expenditures exceed the budget. So, you increase the budget, um, to include those expenditures if you've got the revenue to cover it. We have, so far, the expenses that I'm looking at.
Well, so...
We've got more than ample revenue.
Okay. I would like to see the redone, dropping it out, dropping the three months that we had no revenue out, just so we can see where we're at.
We can prepare a, an amended budget to review at the next meeting.
Okay.
Wes, Wes won't be here, but we can.
Yeah.
We can prepare the...
We can do that, but, I mean, I've got the projections of what the revenue will be and what the expenses would be.
But the rest of us have nothing to look at, Wes.
Well, he may not have printed it off since it was just sent out today. I have a copy if he needs it.
Yeah, Wes sent it to me and I forwarded it to everybody sometime today.
Well, I was on the computer at three o'clock and it wasn't there. What, what did you, what did you call it, Dan? Updated general fund cash flow estimate? I don't know why we can't read this.
Probably.
Okay. I did it, and I've got it.
Pat, do you need one?
I, I just found it. It wasn't, I didn't, I didn't think to look earlier or later.
All right, let's, uh, we'll, we'll talk about that when we get to Linda's presentation and talk about where the money's coming from to pay for everything. So, it's not gonna impact today's agenda, meeting agenda. So, if there's no other discussion on today's agenda, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Pat, move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Lynn seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda's approved. We have minutes of the May meeting to approve.
Make a motion, we approve the minutes from the May meeting.
Ken made a motion to approve the minutes from the May eighteenth meeting. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Lynn seconded the motion. Any discussion? Bless you. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Minutes are approved. Any ceremonials, recognitions, proclamations, or memorials? I guess I would like to say, I don't know if this is ceremonials, but I would like to say for the record that we have a, a big Holiday Island shindig coming up on July second, which at this point in time is kind of the best-kept secret in Holiday Island. And I have nothing to do with it, but it's starting to concern me that it's not getting a lot of publicity because there was mention of it in the High Sid newsletter last week, but no posters, no, nobody knows that there's gonna be bands there, good bands playing music. So, I would suggest that if there's anybody here that has anything to do with that.
Like me, yeah, I, I...
You might wanna rattle the cages about getting some...
I know who's in charge. I've talked to that person a couple of times. I don't know why we're not getting some of that out, 'cause we're supposed to be, but we have another meeting coming up and I will certainly bring it up. 'Cause you're right, we've got, we've got, and I can't remember Dale's band's name. We got Ramblin' Creek and we got the George Brothers and, uh, I think that's it as far as entertainment, but that's pretty good entertainment.
Yeah, but we don't want...
And a lot of other things, but I don't know, but I'm not in charge of the publicity part of it.
It's on a Friday, so it's gonna take some publicity to get people here.
Well, there was some talk of you getting, sitting in a dunk tank.
That is something that no one has officially approached me yet. And my calendar is filling up. I think it's full on the second.
Well, I'm gonna be busy, so I won't be in the dunk tank. I can, I'm gonna be busy that night.
All right. Uh, let's move on then to reports. Jerry, you wanna give us an update on the latest activities for C three?
Yeah, just briefly. Had a good meeting, uh, the first Friday in June. Dan and I both attended. It was kind of a wide-ranging discussion of, uh, needs of the county and how all the towns, cities fit into it. The most interesting news is that they're inviting a gentleman to our next meeting in July who is, uh, installing broadband access to several places in the county. His name escapes me. Do you remember what his name is?
It's the guy from Berryville?
Berryville, yeah. And, uh...
I, I wrote the name down somewhere, but, uh...
Yeah, that, that was kind of interesting. And then, uh, we, I, I reported the last meeting about the, the demographic piece that Sandy Martin's putting together and, um, we've got to get some favorable information to, to put on it or, or... We're behind, we're behind everyone else, 'cause they've had this, this, uh, this in the works long before we incorporated. And so, uh, we're gathering that, but it, it'll come together.
We're trying to figure out what, what we wanna pitch as far as economic development for Holiday Island. You know, the other cities are, you know, they're, they're kind of, you know, they have their destiny mapped out, you know? Eureka Springs is, is tourist, Berryville is the county seat and has a certain amount of industry and a lot of retail. They're kind of the commercial center for the county. Forest City has got the factories, you know, and their Tysons keeps expanding over there. So, that's, you know, they're kind of the industrial, um, community in the C four group. Now, we gotta figure out what we wanna be.
Yeah, and...
Prime residential. Prime residential.
Yeah. But I think it takes a little more thought than that because what we, what we wanna be when we grow up has to have a sufficient tax base to support the city.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure that a hundred percent residential will ever get us there.
You're right, that's, that's...
No, it's, it's got to come from across the board, some light industrial, retail. But one thing about these other towns, they, they all have Economic Development Task Force or, in some cases, commissions. Couple of them have full-time Economic Development Directors, Chambers that are very much involved in economic development. And we're, we're taking our first step tonight with this resolution of authorizing the mayor to create a task force to kind of help us map our strategies and, uh, kind of get that going.
So, um, yeah, we'll get to the resolution under new business. That it?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I think it's a good group and they're, they, they're doing some good work and it's not gonna be, you know, they're not going to exclusively do economic development for us. They're gonna help us with a little bit of marketing. But, um, we're, we're gonna have to figure out how to approach it here, especially the broadband thing. I wish I was more knowledgeable about that, but, uh...
Well, I...
I'm concerned that we're, you know, we're gonna be the only ones around here that doesn't have broadband sufficient to attract the work-from-home people and stuff like that.
I have a neighbor that's less than a hundred yards away that does not have broadband.
Yeah.
Doesn't have access for it.
Right.
So, what is Berryville doing about it?
It, it's a, uh, it, uh, it's not wire, it's...
No, it's radio.
Radio.
Wireless.
Wireless.
They put towers up and, I guess, set you up, you know, with something pointing at the tower.
It's an antenna about this big that mounted onto your house. That's all it takes. It's what I had in Sioux City, wireless connection.
And, uh, and, and apparently, he's getting grant money from the state and to do this. And he's got a map of all the areas that he's covering. I have not seen that map, but the map, according to Sandy at C three, she said the map does have a couple of very small little pockets in Holiday Island that he's working on. We need to talk to him and get that expanded to all of Holiday Island that doesn't have access right now, so...
Quite a bit of it, of Holiday Island does not have cable access.
Mm-hmm.
And is this part of the statewide plan then?
I don't know.
Because the governor has plans for that, I think that they...
He's getting, he's getting grant money, so I'm, I'm assuming that he's benefiting from the governor's initiative. You know, that they, they started a rural broadband, uh, I mean, that's a federal program that money came to the state for. And, um, and then with the, I think, the first COVID relief package had a lot of money in it for broadband. You know, so I, I have the feeling that everybody in the country is working on broadband but us. And if we're not actively working on it, you know, we, you know, we're not gonna be attracting the kind of people that we want moving here, that, you know, the, the professionals that can work from home and stuff like that, you know, private business owners that work from home.
Well, I'm aware there's been, for years here already, a lot of people working from home. Insurance business, industry, medical services.
Yeah. Not all of, you know, virtually anybody needs internet anymore. They don't all need, necessarily need broadband. You know, broadband, there's a definition of broadband. It's so, so many mega bytes of download, so many of upload. I don't remember what it is, and I'm talking way out of... I might as well be talking about brain surgery because I don't know anything about it. But, uh, you know, if you're just, if you're just working from home and you have to get on the internet once in a while, you know, regular cable is plenty good. If you're a, as an example, I have a niece that worked for DreamWorks in California for several years. She, she works on the production side of their animated films. And now she works for maybe Nickelodeon. I think, I think she might have switched and, and worked, now she works for Nickelodeon. But she lives on a farm in rural Wisconsin and works for DreamWorks or Nickelodeon and does her job just fine. And it's, you know, it's a fairly responsible job, 'cause she worked at DreamWorks for a long time. That's the kind of people we want moving here, but if you don't have, she definitely needs broadband. She's downloading animated, uh, films and, uh, you know, doing whatever the production people do to turn that into a commercial product. And, uh, so, you know, you can't be sitting there with a lost service signal on your screen at eight o'clock in the morning because everybody's on Facebook.
Well, in the same year, we have a son in Des Moines who's a CPA and he is now controller of a company and he is supervising their operations and provides, uh, food ser, runs food services in hospitals in five states. And he's doing it from home.
Yeah. So, anyway, enough said. That's one of the things that Jerry is gonna get into, right? You're gonna find out who that guy is. And we don't have to wait until the next C three meeting to try to sit down and talk to him.
Well, I, I will, I will initiate that.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, Wes, May financials?
Okay. Uh, I emailed those out. You should all have those, a summary of what we had for the month of May. It also has the detail of the transactions. Just to briefly summarize, we had almost twenty-three thousand dollars in general fund revenue. Our budget was nineteen thousand dollars, so the general fund revenue was three thousand over budget. And that budget overage was primarily in the area of the county sales tax last month from the month of May. I do not know what June's will be yet. That will come out, um, on June twenty-fifth. Expenses were five thousand one eighty-seven compared to our budget of fourteen thousand eight ninety-six. So, we were almost ten thousand dollars under budget on expenses. So, we started the month with seventeen thousand in our fund balance. Our revenue exceeded the expenses of seventeen thousand seven hundred roughly for May. So, we have an ending general fund balance of thirty-four thousand eight fifty-five. For the street fund, our revenue was seventeen thousand seven eighty approximately compared to a budget of fourteen thousand five hundred. So, that was more than three thousand dollars over budget. And we started the month with fourteen thousand five hundred in the fund balance and resulted in an ending balance of thirty-two thousand three ten. And I will comment in June, as I said, I do not know yet, have not received a report and will not for another ten days as to what our share of the county sales tax would be. But our municipal aid, which is the only item of general fund that we get from the state, uh, we're budgeting two thousand a month and it was thirty-seven hundred in June. So, that was almost double budget.
Along that line, did you ever get a reply back from the county?
Did I get...
A reply back from the county on the road turn?
Negatory.
Okay, so we're gonna have to...
You have to decide what we're gonna do to follow up on that, would be my suggestion.
We don't, do we wanna talk about it or...
No. But, you know, we'll, we'll have to make, we'll have to call as opposed to trying to get...
I would make a trip.
Response for an email.
I would make a in-person.
Yeah.
I, I mean, I would volunteer to go there and stir them up, but that's not my place, though.
All right, any, any other comments or questions on the financials?
But I would be willing to speak.
No, I might add to your comment after a while when we talk about the Rescue America Funds.
Yeah, okay.
You know, I've had discussion with the Department of Finance there.
Good. I hope you convinced them to change their mind.
Well, I'll report on what I was told, yeah.
I can't get you to jump in there and say it, huh?
No.
Okay, we don't need to approve the financials, so we'll move on. Uh, computer hardware software proposal, Linda.
Okay, um, we've, I've been working on this all along and been talking to, uh, service providers that provide us support services in addition to buying the equipment. And I know we're in, in a position now where we think we have enough money to purchase some equipment. So, that's why we're talking about it today. Um, I, did, I put, I put this proposal in front of all of you. Do you see it? You don't have it, Ken?
No.
Oh. I, I didn't know what that was.
Okay, that's...
I thought it was something firm something.
That's, that's what we're talking about. So, I wanted to make sure y'all had a copy. I didn't send it out in advance, 'cause I was changing some numbers right up until meeting time before I came over here. Uh, they were, we had to find out what kind of setup Wes had at home so we could factor that into how we configure his laptop now. Both the, both the mayor and treasurer have identified that they want laptops instead of a desktop. And I think the reason would be, well, we always knew the mayor wanted one, but Wes, uh, has agreed to go laptop so that he can safely, uh, use his, use that city computer at home or if he happens to be traveling and is gone for an extended amount of time. And he could safely communicate, uh, over the internet with this setup um, to update the accounting system or anything else in the office, basically.
And the fact that Wes is gonna be gone for the next month is a critical example of why we need to do this.
Yeah. So, um, so we're getting, we're, we, this plan shows us getting two laptops. And also, we've kind of decided they should go with the Office 365, which is, which is you're using the Office products in the cloud instead of having it installed. That saves time and effort for keeping them security updated and such as that. And we also have in here an item for Adobe Acrobat. That's the only other thing that will be added of standard software. We're gonna get a twenty-four-inch monitor and a keyboard and mouse for Wes as well as a docking station for Wes and a docking station for his home so that he can plug in his home monitor and keyboard and mouse to the laptop. And so, it'll make it just like he was using a desktop at home, basically. The other items that we have on here are a backup UPS system to give us power if electric goes out here at the office. A wireless router with a, with a advanced security firewall. A, a software license that goes with it. That would be the main security for the network in the office. And the things that would be networked are the laptops, um, the printer that we got from Mary... I can't, I can't pronounce her last name, maybe you...
Sefransky?
Sefransky. And that's a very nice printer she donated to the city, too, by the way. And our, a, a check printing printer and a NAS Tower hard drive, two terabytes, that would store all our office documents and our scanned, everything that we scan and everything. So, um, and then that would also have a cloud service subscription so that there would be automatic backing up to a cloud so we wouldn't really have to worry about data getting lost at all, 'cause there would be automatic backups taken. Then it includes a managed services contract. And if you read about the service provider in the top paragraph, this is the company that I've talked to, several managed service providers. And this is the one I thought offered the most for the best price. And they were very responsive to our request and met with me several times. They will purchase, install, set up all of our equipment, get everything working, uh, not, not charging us any extra for the setup or installs. Uh, they're, they will be available from eight to five on business days through their help desk for anything we need to call about, whether it's, I don't know what I'm doing in Excel or whether my laptop is broken or... The only thing they won't respond to is accounting software, which goes through a separate provider. And they would help us, uh, they will set up the backup and recovery systems. They will, uh, monitor our network twenty-four-seven. They'll do proactive maintenance of the computer and the patching, the patches that are needed, security patches on anything, hardware, software, um, keeping us up to date with everything we need. And I think that's, covers most everything. Oh, they'll come on site... Oh, they'll come onsite if we need them, too. And that would be no extra charge if we need onsite service.
In other words, when we buy all this stuff and have to wire it all up, they'll come here and...
Oh, yeah.
All we gotta do is watch them.
Right. The service provider for the accounting software, which is on the next page, is CSA Software. CSA provides Red Wing Center Point Fund Accounting and is used by ninety percent of the cities and towns in Arkansas. They've got a great record of satisfaction with all their cities and towns. Hi-Cid has been using them for, I don't know, seven, eight years, And we'd also decided to go with the laser printer that they offer for six ninety-five since we got our other printer for free. And also, with the Center Point, they have an option that Wes could actually use Center Point Accounting in the cloud so he wouldn't have to have it installed on his desktop. And that provides a way more secure solution for doing our accounting system and keeping that, all the data in the cloud where it's backed up automatically. We don't have to worry about it getting corrupted or getting, you know, out of whack on his computer or having to back it up ourselves or remember to back it up, things like that. And so, I've laid out all the costs. A few of these things are estimates, but these are mostly from a quote that they gave me. So, it's pretty close to what it's gonna cost. And I separated it into what the cost would be for twenty-one, this year, and what subsequent years would cost us. And that's in terms of the annual cost. Some of it comes monthly and some of it you have to pay when you pay. Yes?
The Meraki Wireless Router Firewall to prevent intrusion on the internet, has that been confirmed that it does work with the Cox equipment? I ask that because I look for routers with my Cox equipment.
They know, they know we're using Cox.
Okay.
That's all I can tell you.
Okay, all right.
And it's a solution they roll out to many of their customers.
Okay.
But I don't know specifically whether we might run, we might run into a problem with any of this when it comes down to actually implementing it.
And do you know who the cloud provider is?
Meraki, or Cisco, probably.
Cisco, okay.
It's a Cisco company.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good start.
Cisco, Cisco has a great reputation.
You commented that they did not provide support for the accounting software. That's provided by...
Yeah, it's part of the contract with Center Point. When we buy that license, they agree to provide like twenty-four seven help desk support on that.
Okay, the Tower Hard Drive, okay, what's that for now?
That'd be for backing up all the office documents. And if we...
If everything's on the cloud, what the hell are you gonna back up?
Well, you're back, you put it on the drive, the hard drive in the office, and then it backs it up to the cloud. The backup is in the cloud, actually.
Yeah, I understand what the cloud is. I'm asking why we need a big Tower Hard Drive.
Well, for our Word documents, our scanned files.
Well, they're on the cloud, you said.
No, okay. We will be putting them on the NAS Tower Drive first from the laptop. If we create a scan on the printer in there of a receipt, that will be stored in a file and directory that's on the NAS drive. The NAS drive will be backed up periodically as often as needed to the cloud. So, that's your secure backup.
That's our off-site backup.
Off-site backup, thank you, Lynn.
Understand what the cloud is.
But it's off-site.
It's not the one you use on a daily basis. It's not where you would retrieve documents from on a daily basis.
Well, you've got, what size disk drives are on the laptops?
I think, what did we say here?
Says five twelve gig.
Five twelve gig.
Five twelve, that's pretty small.
But you want something that's central that everyone can access from. That's why you're gonna put everything on the central drive.
Yeah, we don't have a server, so this kind of extra does that.
So, that's where everyone will store their documents to and retrieve documents from.
Is everything on the hard drive in the office gonna be backed up on the cloud?
Yes.
Okay, then this, I mean, it's a two terabyte capacity on the hard drive and then one terabyte on the cloud.
Yeah, and we probably have to go to another terabyte once you exceed the two terabyte. So, I mean, once you exceed the one terabyte, you'd probably have to go to another. But it'd take us a while to get there. We don't have to get there this year. Maybe not even next year.
Now, that NAS Tower Hard Drive, two terabytes.
Mm-hmm.
Now, so, is that a backup here in addition to the laptop?
The NAS will be here in addition to your laptop.
In addition to the laptop and then it's also in the cloud.
And then it'll shoot it up to the cloud every so often, whenever you want, whatever the schedule is.
So, all of our videos, we have YouTube library, but we would put those on this backup drive?
They could be backed up there for sure.
Okay.
Sounds good to me.
So, Wes and Dan are gonna rely on the five hundred and twelve gigabyte?
No, I think they would want to store everything on that central drive so that if they throw the laptop in the lake, that we have it. The city has the data.
Okay.
I don't plan on taking it out on the boat, but you never know.
Well, you never know. If you have it in the car, somebody, all they have to do is bust the window and...
That's right.
You leave it in the car today, you're surprised.
Yeah. If you want to be sure you can ever retrieve it again, you'll be uploading it to the NAS. And you will have the connectivity, even when you're away from the office, to securely, because we have that Meraki drive, to put it on the NAS directly, just like it is in your home.
So, how do we, you and I, use that equipment for storing the videos that we record and the audio that we record?
Well, we might have to set up special access to it, I'm not sure.
Okay.
Or give it to Dan.
At the very least, we put on a thumb drive and they put it on their machine.
Well, we don't really want to use thumb drives that much, but yeah.
Well, that's why I was asking about the five twelve. Should we, and they're relatively inexpensive, get a two terabyte hard drive for the laptops?
You don't want that much laptop hard drive because you really want it stored here at the office in a secure setting. Your laptop can be stolen and then someone has access to it. It can be dropped in the lake. It can, you know, you can drop it and break it.
Okay, I'm talking about an external hard drive that he locks in a drawer at night or something.
That's possible, but I don't think you need it with this setup. Are you saying instead of the setup?
No, 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 no. Just, I mean, you know more about it than I do. I mean, in my business, in the newspaper business, I mean, we, everybody had an external hard drive.
I have several at home myself.
Yeah, so that just kind of scares me that if you don't, you know, you could run out of space on your laptop if you hadn't been diligent about storing it.
Well, if, his laptop is only for city business, exclusively for city business. The documents and Excel spreadsheets don't take up much space. A scanned document takes up as much as a low-res picture, basically. You're not gonna use up space that much. Five twelve is probably way more capacity than you need on the laptop, except that it makes the laptop more valuable when you go to trade it in or something, or resell it or whatever.
Wouldn't it be, I mean, if we, if he had a policy of backing up to the hard drive here every time he...
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking it needs to be. Yeah, definitely.
Well, you made a statement like, however often we...
Well, yeah, and I foresee it every time you're in the office. You know, you take stuff off your drive. Or you can back it up from home even, every night. Every time you use the computer, you could back it up, whatever you do there. But yeah, we'll need some policy.
I mean, the more backup you have and the more often that you do it, you decrease dramatically the chance of losing something.
Absolutely. And that, you actually brought another point out that I wanted to mention. There's a document, I forgot what it was, I think it's right, oh, yeah. I found this document. Arkansas Legislative Audit: Information Systems Best Practices. This was written in March of 2020. It's fifteen pages worth of IT best practices. It's very detailed. Oh, my God. It says policies and procedures all over the place, all throughout this.
Fourteen pages talk about ransomware and backup, right?
They couldn't stress it enough. I mean, really. And it says, you know, well, you need to consider your size, size of your operation, everything with all these things.
In that light, is this protection, will it protect us from the ransomware? Is our terabyte tower backup gonna be separate from the network so that ransomware can't find it?
The Meraki is gonna protect it.
Okay, all right.
That's why we're getting the Meraki.
It's a Meraki fire. What are these people gonna do for two hundred and fifty dollars?
They won't get in with that going on.
Okay. So, if we click on a, if they click on a bad email that can't find our backup, they will find everything on their laptop, but it won't find the tower?
We're gonna also hope that Ionis' extra security software on email that we're paying for is gonna help with that email.
Stop those from coming through?
Yeah, and you're not gonna be using your personal Cox email at all on the city computer.
Well, yeah, along that same line, and maybe that kind of answers my question is, is there a factor in there that protects us so the backup doesn't get infected by...
By the ransomware?
By ransomware or whatever that might come in so that, you know, if you get bad data, so that it isn't automatically backed up to the backup.
Yeah, so his laptop gets corrupted, some automatic procedure doesn't send that over to the backup tower and wipe it out?
Well, if it does, we have a backup we can restore from.
Be the...
In the cloud.
Okay, all right.
I am not saying it can't happen, but you have to have multiple protections going on all at the same time. And the more you have, more of those protections you have, the more protected you're gonna be. Well, that's kind of redundant.
The, you know, the best we can do is the best that, you know, the providers have to offer right now. And I think this is close to it, at least, the best that...
Yeah, although this firm that we're talking about dealing with here, they've got five locations across Arkansas and quite a few clients. They only have four Arkansas cities before us. But they're getting into that business, obviously. They are Eureka Springs' provider also, which helps. But also, they do a lot of law offices and medical offices. Those are some of their, some of the most of their clients. And they also have very strict, you know, needs for security.
Our service would be out of Lowell?
Yeah, exactly. The guys I talked to are in Lowell. I was very impressed.
These are the people that we're gonna pay four fifty a month for?
Yeah. They charge, by the way, they charge, by the way, by the hour. If you wanted to go hourly with them, it's a hundred fifty dollars an hour.
That's pretty cheap.
That's what I'm saying.
And the clock starts, the clock starts when they get in their car in Lowell.
Four fifty pays for about three hours, four hours?
Yeah. The round trip's gonna be, you know, two hundred and something.
BJ was asking if she had another copy of the...
I don't know if it's gonna tell you anything, but I don't have an extra, no. I probably could.
You can have mine. Have you posted it on the website or will?
Just attach it to the minutes.
Yeah, give her mine.
I don't see a problem with just attaching that to the minutes.
Okay.
All right, I don't think, you can advise me if I'm wrong, but I don't think we need a motion to approve making this expenditure unless we want to get into a discussion about where the money is coming from in the budget and if we're using more than one budget line item to cover the cost.
Well, yeah, and I figure, I do see multiple line items in here the way it should be because we're talking about, part of it is hardware, part of it, we're talking about buying equipment, part of it, we're purchasing monthly services.
Monthly licenses and services, yeah. So, there's monthly costs and hardware costs.
Even though we're a pretty small operation, our budget next year is gonna have a lot more detail to it than our budget did this year. Because, you know, we just kind of made big buckets that says IT this much, but we didn't say how much was gonna be operating expense and how much was gonna be capital and stuff like that. So, we need to be more specific in next year's budget.
Well, and I'll say, when we made the budget, I guess we weren't talking about IT services. We were looking at the proposal that we had for the accounting software and the computer that they recommended. We weren't talking about the laptop for the mayor. We weren't talking about the local back, this NAS drive.
Yeah. When you talk about what you really need to operate and really think about, you know, making sure you have a long-term solution rather than a...
Well, and it's, you know, it's, having actually tried to run the city now for six months, you have a whole different perspective about, you know, how, you know, what kind of equipment you really need and stuff like that, so.
And I will also comment that just in the last few weeks, there's been communication between cities that belong to the municipal league about IT services and so on. So, it's getting a lot of attention right now with all the publicity.
If there's a failure in the system to protect us, is there any resolution or comeback with the computer? Is there a guarantee?
They, I don't know that, they didn't call it a guarantee, but they have a service level agreement that's part of the contract. So, I'm not sure we could get reimbursement for lost, you know, things that...
Well, it wouldn't be, you know, if their system, if their setup is what they recommended just fails in the task at hand, at least a reimbursement of what we spent with them.
We'll have to see what the contract says, but...
Okay.
They did say that it includes service level agreements. I have yet to see them, but I know that they do have service. And that's one of the things that the legislative audit had in there. Make sure your service provider has service level agreements for your contract. But they do have that.
Yes, Kim? Yeah, this is great. It's, we're, I don't know. I mean, it's a lot for what we're actually doing now. I'm having a little trouble wrapping my, around, you know, actually what we're doing.
Well, we're generating records, even though we might not be writing a lot of checks and stuff like that, we're generating records every day. Every day, we are generating records here. And if we don't put in a system that starts establishing that history in, you know, in a retrievable form, it's going to be impossible two or three years down the road to try to capture all that history and upload it into the new... to try to capture all that history and upload it into the new real system and, you know, so that you have access to all that history. And, you know, I, I can tell you from, you know, sitting in that desk down there, you know, just, just exploring ordinances and things like that. It's, it's, it's a lot more, it's a lot more complex than just writing a half a dozen checks a month for rent and internet and stuff like that. There's a lot more to it. Even though we, we don't spend a lot of money yet, you know, we're trying to get set up to be a real city.
Yeah, I understand.
But, I mean, we, we discussed all, I mean, there's not anything other than maybe an extra laptop that we had a very lengthy discussion two or three months ago, that that's what we needed. And, you know, I understand your objection, but that should have been.
Say I was, I'm just having a hard time.
It is a lot of money.
Lot to swallow.
It is a lot of money, but, you know, but a good portion of it is just a one-time investment.
Yeah.
You know, the annual operating cost isn't that hard to digest.
Yeah, it is, because she says next year is $10,500.
Yeah.
So that's a lot of.
In a $400,000 operating budget, that's reasonable.
And that, that's the world we live in now. You've got to have these backups.
That's right, that's what.
I should make up the gun.
It's the, it's the engine in the bus, you know, that's, that's what runs everything.
It's a mile away, which.
And I just written, I don't know if it was in Arkansas where a couple of cities got hit with ransomware. And I can't remember how much money they wanted, but they were able to negotiate them down because they said, well, you know, we're just small cities. We don't have that kind of money. We can't pay that. So they negotiated them down. I can't remember to what, but.
Tell me again.
We don't even know what Bitcoin is.
I don't know where you go get one of those.
Just kind of give me a.
To me, it sounds like wooden nickels.
I've got some of those. Linda?
Yeah?
If you would, just give us a brief synopsis, what this Computer Hut's going to do on an.
Sure.
I, I just read it.
You read it?
Yeah, but.
You want me to say it out loud?
I mean, I, I, okay.
If something breaks or goes wrong, we can call them. If we have a question about how something works or not works, doesn't work, we can call them.
When we have a question?
Excuse me?
When we have a question.
Yeah, when we have a question, whenever we have a question. We can call them if it's between eight and five and, you know, and then we can, they, they will escalate the call as appropriate because they have more than one person there, you know? So if the first person can't solve it, they've got a whole staff of people that, various skills that they could add to the equation.
Is this hardware and software or?
Yes, hardware and software questions, both.
Except for the accounting.
Except for accounting.
I understand that.
Well, the accounting software's in there too.
But it goes to the different help, yes.
They've, you got your own support and annual maintenance license with it.
I gathered, Linda, that in looking through that description is that they're watching what is happening 24 hours a day.
Yeah, they, with that Meraki stuff and, if you had an issue with your computer, they could look at your computer and what's going on with it from Lowell, you know? And get on, actually see your exact problem. They could see what your computer's doing.
They have access?
Yeah, they'll have access.
I think the biggest gain in this whole thing is having an experienced company set up all of our processes and our procedures so that our backups are foolproof.
That's the main thing.
And fail-proof, but foolproof. We just can't screw it up. No, really, they're going to set it up.
If you're running on resources and unskilled people, you're going to screw it up.
Yeah.
There's nothing that you can't screw.
And that, that's why I like the automatic feature because having to depend on people remembering to manually back up their stuff is, is not foolproof.
Yeah, with everything being in the cloud.
It's a thing to do and it takes a while to do it too. It doesn't just happen in an instant.
Well, I, I rent a computer shop and we did, we spent probably two hours on an eight-hour shift backing up.
Yeah.
But your computers had those wires with the beads on them that just litter crossed it.
Well, when I back up, I back up my whole computer periodically onto.
No, we had MagTape.
Hard drive and it.
It takes a while. Three hours, four hours.
Six hours or more. I usually, I'll start it in the evening and just let it go and it'll be done in the morning.
Okay.
Well, you, so are we good to go? You ended the conversation with, you don't think you need any kind of motion in order to approve this. Is that your intention?
Unless somebody wants to make a motion. If you think we need a motion, make a motion.
No, is it your intention to proceed with this bid?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Because it's within the budget and.
Well, if you could figure it out, I mean, with the budget we got, you can't figure out where that's coming from. Oh, you're, you're just going to gross, so.
Well, Wes had it pretty well laid out with that cash flow statement.
That's cash flow sheet that you've got. Basically, it comes from two line items.
Well, I'm looking at the original budget that we approved, okay?
Right. When you look at the hardware part, and I've attempted to go through here and sort out the costs between what is services and what is capital outlay. And yes, we would be, right now.
You're looking at.
Based on what I know.
You're calling that the capital outlay is hardware, is that what you're?
Right. And that's what I'm calling the hardware part. My projections are with what we've already had, we would have $15,000 in expenses. Our original budget was $9,600, so we're $5,400 over budget on that. But then when you go down to contracted services, right now, what I see is $5,048 in costs and our additional budget was $11,000. So we're $6,000 under budget on that.
I'm just, I went back to the original budget and the equipment was $9,600.
$9,621 is what I've got.
So.
So we, on those two items, we're still, what, $1,000 under budget?
I just, I just think we.
I mean, if it, if.
I just think we need to rework it.
If it, you know, makes it more official or if, you know, if it answers any questions as to whether or not the council has approved this expenditure as Wes has laid it out in the, in the, in the cash flow, let's vote on it. Mr., the, the council can vote to, to amend the budget.
I'm, I'm not sure, but I thought, I'm thinking with a city, don't you, if you change the line item where something comes out of, don't you have to have a?
I emailed Lanny about that and I haven't gotten her response.
Okay, but you might have to have a resolution.
The only thing in our resolution, the only thing in our resolution was totals, total revenue and total expense.
Oh, but we attached a.
We attached, we attached spreadsheet, so. I've emailed him to see.
Which is what we approved, so.
Yeah, so, you know.
In the resolution, we approved the totals only, no?
Yeah, the resolution is just a total.
Well, if you find we need to do it at the next meeting or down the road, you can do it.
Yeah.
I just think we need a little better guide, idea where we're going.
You know, if you, we want to redo the whole budget, we can. At some point, I don't know that we're ready to do that tonight, but.
We're not, no, we already agreed on that.
You know, right now, I'm looking at $170,000 in revenue for the year and $102,000 in expense.
So that leaves 68.
That leaves a $68,000 surplus.
But you could reallocate that around a little bit too.
Yeah.
But I am going to, I am going to recommend at least by the end of the year that, that $44,000 that we had in for streets out of the general fund, that we go ahead and, and pay that to the district.
Right.
So that would reduce the $68,000 to $24,000.
To 24, still have a $24,000 surplus, which is.
Anyway.
Well, my feeling is if he, if he's projected out based on those months that we didn't have any revenue and managed expenses and then reasonable forecast that we're going to have more income than we have expenses, then, I mean, there's no reason to hold off on this. I mean, it's too important.
We're, we have a very good handle now going forward on what our monthly operating expenses are going to be, whereas we didn't have much of an idea at all when we did the budget. So I think it's, I think that Wes can put together a very accurate and safe, you know, cash, projected cash flow now.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to be very interested to see what we get for sales tax this month. I think once we get that, we should have a pretty good idea of what our revenue is going to be.
These months should be rich for sales tax.
Mm-hmm.
Well, we also had that $100,000 set.
The what?
None.
Okay, so we're going to move forward with, with Linda's proposal. I, I appreciate all the work she's done on that. It was, that saved us $25,000 all right, right off the top just doing, designing the system for us and getting all the quotes and so.
Good, glad we could go with it.
We appreciate your, your efforts.
Yeah, I did provide, if you want to vote for it, I'll record a vote.
It's up to the council. You want to vote on it?
Go ahead and vote on it, Hill.
Make a motion.
I make a motion, we approve, to approve the purchase of the IT equipment and software.
I'll second.
So Ken made the motion to approve Linda's proposal. Lynn seconded it. Any discussion, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, I don't think we needed a roll call vote.
Okay.
Alright. Moving on to ordinance 2021-005, salaries and municipal property.
If anyone needs a copy of that ordinance, I have some extras.
I finally got one.
I did.
Yeah, can you, can I have a copy? Because I don't, I don't think I ran my cell phone.
Here, let's see. I've got one.
You've got an extra? Well, I've got several here.
What are we doing, 2021-005?
Yeah, we'll do that one first.
Salaries and municipal property.
Alright, I'm not sure that everybody was here when I was explaining this the first time around, but our city attorney, Justin Eichman, gave me a little direction on the, on passing ordinances relative to three readings versus one reading versus emergency clauses. And he said that most cities that he works with suspend the rule on the three readings and just read the ordinance one time. That doesn't, that's different than imposing the emergency clause. So it's really a two-step process. You can, the, the council can vote to suspend the rule requiring three readings. And then, if there's an emergency clause in the, in the ordinance, then the, there would be another motion by the council to, to invoke the emergency clause. The emergency clause basically affects the, the effective date of the ordinance. The three readings doesn't have, doesn't affect the 90-day implementation. The, the 90-day grace period from when an ordinance was passed is intended for citizens to put together a referendum challenge, I guess, to the ordinance. And if you, if you invoke the emergency clause, they would only have 30 days to do that. So that's why the emergency clause, you know, is only enacted in real emergencies where you can't wait. So he gave me something that he put together for another city as to how to address these, how to properly pass an ordinance with one reading by suspending the rules for three readings at three different meetings. So that's what I'm going to propose that we do for these ordinances here. They won't have emergency clauses in them, but we will read them one time. And then from tonight, there'll be 90 days for people to, to act on it. Alright, so the next item on the agenda for consideration is ordinance number 2021-005, an ordinance establishing salaries and elected officials, of elected officials and employees and assigning municipal property to elected officials and employees of the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas. I will entertain a motion to suspend and dispense with the rule requiring the reading of the ordinance in full on three different days and read ordinance number 2021-005 in one reading. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Jerry moved to suspend the rules. Lynn seconded it. Is there any discussion? Wes, this does require a roll call vote.
Okay. And this is for to suspend the rules, correct?
To suspend the rules.
Are we, are we suspending the rules for both of these?
No, just for the.
Do it separately?
Just, you have to do each ordinance separately.
Okay. Councilman Dumas?
Aye.
Councilman Elwood?
Aye.
Councilman Graves?
Aye.
Councilman Mills?
Aye.
Councilman Fitman?
Aye.
Motion carried, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, motion carries. I guess since this is my ordinance, I can go ahead and read it unless somebody else wants to. An ordinance establishing salaries of elected officials and employees and assigning municipal property to elected officials and employees of the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas. Whereas a method must be established by which salaries are set by the city of Holiday Island and whereas employees and elected officials of the city of Holiday Island may from time to time be assigned municipal property for use in the conduct of their job, now be ordained by the city council of the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas, that salaries for employees effective January 1st, 2021, all city of Holiday Island personnel salaries and wages shall be fixed by the mayor and presented to the town council for approval as part of the annual budget, which may be amended from time to time. A schedule of current salaries will be kept on file with the recorder treasurer and available for public inspection. Salaries for elected officials effective for the year beginning January 1, 2021 and ending December 31, 2021. Mayor and council members of the city of Holiday Island will be compensated at the following rates. Mayor, $0 monthly. City council members, $0 monthly. Effective for the partial year beginning July 1, 2021 and ending December 31, 2021, recorder treasurer will be compensated at the following rate. City recorder treasurer, $2,400 monthly. City recorder treasurer, twenty-four hundred dollars monthly. City property, A, the city department head or supervisor shall be required to get a signed receipt listing all such property from any person provided with or furnished any type of property. The receipt shall be filed in the city office with the recorder treasurer. In the event of death, termination, or resignation, and the agent, servant, employee, or officer is wages accrued sick time, vacation paid leave of absence, or any other sums due him or her from the city, the city office shall notify said individual in writing of the amount owed and simultaneously request said individual to return any and all property supplied or furnished by the city. C, if the individual has lost misplaced or otherwise disposed of said property, the city will be paid in full by the, by the individual is executor or administrator. In the event of depreciation, of depreciable property, the city shall receive the depreciated value. The city may withhold from wages accrued sick time, vacation paid leave of absence, or other sums held by the city, the value of the property not returned at the time of death, termination, or resignation. Due to the fact that compensation for elected officials was delayed until revenue was available, and such revenue is now available, an emergency is being declared in order to prevent further delays, passed and approved by the city council of the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas, on this date of six fifteen, twenty-twenty-one. I was in error before when I said that there would be no emergency clauses, so once we vote on this ordinance, we will vote on the emergency clause. And, uh, let me explain why I included in here city employees when we really don't have any city employees. Uh, I was anticipating by that, by the end of the year, there's a possibility at least that we could have a code enforcement officer, so I went ahead and included it. And this ordinance will be, you know, replicated year over year over year and updated to reflect salaries. Any discussion on the ordinance?
That, that was one of my que, questions was, you know, why it had a, you know, it was just applicable to twenty-one.
Uh, because the salaries are fixed every year and with the budget, the salaries are set every year. So we will have to do this again in January.
Mr. Mayor, question. If we were to add an employee toward the end of the year, which sounds kind of unlikely actually, but if we were to do that, would we write another ordinance or update this one to put in that salary?
This had to, I think this had to do with elected.
No, this, this is salaries for, for employees as well. Um, it, it would be, uh, what, what, we wouldn't include the, necessarily the salary. We wouldn't name the individual and put the salary in an ordinance, but, um, I would have to supply an amended budget for the council that says an amen, uh, a budget, an annual budget which may be amended from time to time. So if, if we hire somebody, I will have to amend the annual budget and the council would have to approve it.
I see. That, uh, you, you had a separate paragraph for elected officials that listed the particular level of pay, but.
Yeah.
Employees was in the paragraph where you're having a schedule in the file for those who put it in the budget.
Yeah.
I'd like to suggest a revision in the salaries for employees, the second line, the city council rather than town council.
Oh, good catch.
Yep.
Oh, I didn't see that.
Dang, who did that?
As soon as they passed.
Oh, I didn't catch it either.
Didn't say, relax, city council, it said town council.
Well, mine says city council.
In the second line.
Second line.
Under salaries for employees.
Says the mayor presented to the town council.
Town council, okay, presented to the town council.
Yeah, that's the, eventually we'll get beyond all of these that I drafted back when we were still a town. Any other discussion? Not, Wes can call the roll.
Okay. Uh, do we need, um, a motion to approve?
Need a motion to approve.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance as amended.
I think we have to have the motion to approve the emergency clause first, and then we approve the.
I thought we already did that.
Now. We suspended the rules.
That was the only thing we did.
We suspended the rules for reading.
Let me, emergency clause.
I think we have to vote for the emergency clause first to make sure it's gonna be included in it when we vote on it.
Um, according to Justin's order of business, the, you suspend the rules first, you vote on the motion, and then you vote on the emergency clause.
Okay, and then we vote on the ordinance last.
No.
He said vote on the motion.
Oh, good.
Let me see.
Mr. Mayor, I think what Lynn's saying is true because the resident, the ordinance, you added that, uh, emergency clause to the ordinance, so we need to.
Approve that it stays in there.
That it stays in there.
Or take it out.
Yeah, I mean, his, his order of business is to suspend the rules, approve the ordinance, then approve a motion to, of, on the emergency clause.
Well, we can follow his way then, tonight.
Yeah. I mean, if you're, look at it this way, if you're not planning on voting to, to approve the emergency clause, I suggest you don't approve the ordinance. All right.
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash five as amended.
Second it.
All right, Lynn made the motion.
Okay, just a minute, so that was, um, Lynn and Linda.
Lynn made a motion to approve ordinance number twenty-twenty-one dash oh-oh-five, and Linda seconded the motion. Wes, you can call the roll.
Okay. Councilman Dumas.
Aye.
Councilman Elwood.
Aye.
Councilman Graves.
Aye.
Council member, excuse me, council member Mills.
Aye.
Council member Fitman.
Aye.
Motion carried.
All right, the ordinance passed. Since ordinance, uh, twenty-twenty-one dash zero-zero-five contains an emergency clause, I will therefore entertain a motion to adopt the emergency clause of ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash zero-zero-five.
I'll move, we include the emergency clause.
Linda made the motion.
Second.
Jerry seconded it. Is there any discussion? Wes, this requires a roll call vote again.
Okay. Council member Dumas.
Aye.
Council member Elwood.
Aye.
Council member Graves.
Aye.
Council member Mills.
Aye.
Council member Fitman.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay. All right, now we can move on to ordinance twenty-twenty-one oh-oh-four. Uh, before we get into this, is there anyone on, well, I'm wondering if we need to read this document in its entirety before we get into it.
Right then, is the agreement or the forever?
Well, the agreement is an attachment to the ordinance, so it's part of the ordinance.
I think we've all read it.
Yeah. And it'll be posted with the ordinance when, if, if anyone from the public wants to.
It was also posted online.
Okay. All right, we will read the ordinance, we will suspend reading the, uh, actual agreement. So, um, the next item on the agenda for consideration is ordinance number twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one dash zero-zero-four, um, an ordinance authorizing an interlocal agreement with the Holiday Island Suburban Improvement District, the di, district in parentheses, to provide fire protection services to the city of Holiday Island, the city, Arkansas. Uh, I will entertain a motion to suspend and dispense with the rule requiring the reading as an ordinance in full and on three different days and read the ordinance in one reading.
So moved.
Second.
Lynn made the motion, Jerry seconded it. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Actually, this should be a roll call vote.
Okay. Council member Dumas.
Aye.
Council member Elwood.
Aye.
Council member Graves.
Aye.
Council member Mills.
Aye.
Council member Fitman.
Aye.
Motion approved, all in favor, Mr. Mayor.
All right, the rule requiring the reading of an ordinance in full on three different days has been suspended and dispensed with by a vote of at least two-thirds of all the council members. I will therefore entertain a motion to, uh, adopt ordinance number twenty-twenty-one dash zero-zero-four.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Who was that, Elwood?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
This is, this is a motion.
I'm reading and talking at the same time.
This is a motion to read the ordinance. So, Pat made the motion. And who seconded it?
Linda.
Linda seconded it. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. I'll read, I'll go ahead and read the ordinance again. Uh, ordinance number twenty-twenty-one dash zero-zero-four, city of Holiday Island, Carroll County, Arkansas. An ordinance authorizing an interlocal agreement with the Holiday Island Suburban Improvement District, uh, to provide fire protection services to the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas. Whereas the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas is in need of fire protection services and has determined that such services can most effectively and economically be provided by the Holiday Island Suburban Improvement District, and whereas in accordance with Arkansas Code annotated fourteen dash fifty-three dash one-oh-one, paragraph A two, a city of the second class by ordinance can enter, enter into an interlocal agreement with an established fire department to provide fire protection services in lieu of establishing a fire department, and whereas said fire department must be certified by the Arkansas Fire Protection Services Board and the district's fire department is so certified, whereas the district is able and willing to provide such fire protection services pursuant to an interlocal cooperation agreement for fire protection services, and whereas pursuant to authority provided in the Interlocal Cooperation Act, the parties have prepared an agreement setting forth their respective duties, obligations, and responsibilities with respect of providing fire protection services within their respective jurisdictional boundaries, and whereas the Interlocal Cooperation Act requires approval of the agreement by the governing bodies of the district and the city of Holiday Island, now therefore being enacted by the city council of the city of Holiday Island as follows. Section one, the interlocal cooperation agreement between the district and the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas, providing for fire protection services is hereby ratified and approved. Section two, the mayor is hereby authorized and directed to execute the interlocal cooperation agreement for fire protection services on behalf of the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas, and to take any and all necessary action as may be required to fully and completely implement the provisions of said agreement. Section three, a copy of the interlocal cooperation agreement for fire protection services is attached to this ordinance and incorporated herein by reference. Section four, the agreement shall become effective after the approval and execution thereof by all parties. Section five, the Holiday Island Recorder Treasurer is hereby authorized and directed to file in the office of the Holiday Island City Recorder Treasurer as a part of the minutes of the meeting at which this ordinance is adopted. A copy of the agreement and such documents shall be on file for inspection by any interested person, passed and approved on this day, twenty-twenty-one. First of all, let me say that, uh, Justin Eichman, our city attorney, drafted the ordinance and the interlocal agreement, and I think he did a very fine job. He's done this for other cities, and, uh, so this is not unusual. And, um, in fact, he's the one that pointed out to me that there is such a thing as an interlocal agreement act. So that was, uh, that was, uh, good. The, uh, the district, uh, I, I don't know about, I don't know if all of the commissioners has seen a copy of this agreement yet, but I know that, uh, the chairman and the, uh, and the district manager have reviewed it and, uh, have no concerns with it. They will be taking this up at the board of commissioners' meeting on, uh, Monday night, this coming Monday night. So if, um, if everything goes according to plan, Lawrence and I should be able to sign this agreement sometime next week, and it would be, um, put on file. Is there any discussion?
I, I, I think I finally figured it out. Within, it's the, the same type as, as are provided within its own corporate limits, within the corporate limits of, of Holiday Island. So I guess that's corporate limits of, I said, within Holiday Island City Corp. Is that what that's trying to say?
What are you reading, Ken?
Section three, first, first line. And it just, I don't know, it just.
The same type is provided within its own.
Yeah. And that's exactly, whatever they provide for HICID, they will provide for the city.
It doesn't say that they have to be exactly the same.
Well, they are.
Says of the same type.
They ought to, but they, but they don't have to be.
I, I, I don't know, I guess if, if it said, if it would say within the corporate limits of the city of Holiday Island, I would, I probably would have stumbled on it.
I, I still haven't found what you're talking about.
First, first line under, under section three.
Of the agreement.
But I don't think there's an issue. Right at the top, what's this? Section three.
I think it says it that way because it has to be approved and applied to both parties. That'd be the only explanation I could offer.
Yeah. It says that they'll provide the same, whatever, that, this document doesn't, doesn't, um, acknowledge nor care if Holiday Island, the city of Holiday Island and the suburban improvement district have the same territorial boundaries. So it's saying that whatever HICID does within their boundaries, they will do within our boundaries.
I understand. Okay. The... And I guess probably I'll get beat down on that one too. This is another one that is going to be done annually then?
Yeah.
Because, well, it says ending December and then fifty thousand annually thereafter. Originally, I had a question on why we were giving, paying them for the, the, one, one of the months we didn't have any income, we didn't pay them. But we did pay for February and March. Now my question, why we paid them when we had no income for?
We haven't paid them anything yet.
I know, but we, we are, we are paying them for those two to three months that we had no income.
We're, we're gonna pay them forty, yeah, we're gonna pay them forty-six thousand dollars at, in December.
But that was predicated on a budget that said we were gonna give them forty-six thousand dollars where we had income for two to three months.
Well, the original budget, when we figured we would have, um, a full year's income was fifty thousand dollars.
I'm looking at the original budget, and it has no, it shows no payment for January, which is reflected in what you're paying them, is forty-six. I say I probably use some, okay. And again, I go back to, on a budget I can understand.
Mr. Mayor, I have no experience with interlocal agreements, but can you just outline the methodology of waiting until December to pay the bill?
Because we don't have any money right now.
Okay, alright, that's fair, but then next year is also in December.
If, if, another way to do it would have been to not pay them anything at all this calendar year and wait till January and then pay for the full year in January every year. And, um, but, you know, we, we kind of made a commitment to the district that we would provide some funding this year. So I, I, the agreement was set up kind of forevermore now that we're gonna pay at the end of the year, not at the beginning of the year.
That's fine, that's what I assumed, but I wanted to hear it.
And that payment was included in the cash flow projections.
Yeah, I know, but I didn't see a cash flow, and I looked at the document, I looked at the old budget. And I, I think, you know, we missed three, three total months of revenue. So I have no idea why we left out January in the original one. I, the assumption I would make was that we figured we would not get the income.
Okay, any other discussion on the, uh, ordinance? If not, I will entertain a motion that we approve the ordinance.
I agree.
I'll second.
Jerry made the motion to approve ordinance twenty-two-one dash zero zero four. Linda seconded it, any further discussion? Wes, you want to call the roll?
Uh, yes, council member Graves.
Did you want to suspend the rules on this one?
We did.
Oh, we did that already?
We did that right.
Yeah, already did. Council member Graves.
Aye.
Council member Mills.
Aye.
Council member Pittman.
Aye.
Council member Dumas.
Aye.
Council member Elwood.
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, the ordinance is adopted. And we can move on to resolution twenty-two-one dash zero twenty-one. Mayor Task Force on Economic Development. Do I have a motion to place this on the floor for consideration?
So moved.
Jerry made the motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Jerry, you want to read your resolution?
Sure. Uh, resolution number twenty-two-one dash zero two-one. Resolution creating a mayor-appointed economic development task force. Whereas revenue sources for the newly formed city of Holiday Island, you know, we need to, that needs to be amended. And consequently, the city's ability to take over all of the essential services are limited. And whereas Holiday Island was developed primarily as a retirement community with a focus on recreational amenities to drive lot ownership and home construction, the developer invested in a commercial shopping center that has struggled over the years, but is now showing signs of vi- um, vitalization. Continued growth in home construction, retail, commercial, and light industrial activity is necessary to increase the tax base for the city. And whereas to that end, the mayor's task force on economic development would be formed to advise the mayor and city council in developing short-term and long-term economic development strategies. And whereas, in order to enlist the diverse talents and ideas of stakeholders in Holiday Island, the task force would include ten members comprised of one city council member and nine volunteer community members appointed by the mayor who would be an ex offici- ex officiated, official. Officio, uh, member of the task force. And whereas, in order to help the mayor and city council establish, uh, the vision and mission of an economic development plan, the task force would be tasked to look at a variety of things, including the following. Evaluate the community's strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, otherwise known as a SWOT, uh, analysis. Prioritize, prioritize needs of Holiday Island in two areas, community development and economic development. Identify local, regional, and state entities that can provide assistance and resources. Establish economic development goals and a timeline. Identify practical, cost-effective, and attainable, uh, objectives and strategies. Identify sources of funding and grants necessary to implement the strategies. Prepare a summary report with recommendations to present to the mayor and city council. Now being resolved by the city council of Holiday Island, Arkansas, that a mayor's task force on economic development be formed with goals and objectives as specified above, passed and approved by the city council of Holiday Island, Arkansas on this date, six fifteen, twenty-twenty-one, approved by the mayor and recorder treasurer.
Is there any, uh, discussion? Yes, Lynn?
This, um, list of bullet items are exactly the kinds of things that a city planning commission needs to have when it creates its master plans. And with that in mind, I would suggest that we modify the third whereas to advise the mayor, comma, city council, comma, and city planning commission. Because the city planning commission needs, as one of their tasks, to identify the future of the city. And it needs to be involved with whatever resources it can get to help with making that plan. So my revision is advise the mayor, comma, cross out and, city council, insert, comma, and city planning commission.
Okay.
That's in that last whereas?
Um, the third whereas, it starts with to that end.
I thought she was talking about the bullets.
No, it's talking about the bullets and the, what they are tasked to do, but to revise the ordinance to include the city planning commission.
Yeah, I see that, and I was looking, I was wondering.
She's talking about that last line. No, right here.
Yeah. Is there any place else, is there any place else?
The one that says to that end.
No, because he's talking about.
The mayor's task force.
Right there.
It's supposed to have the planning commission.
Cross this out.
Cross the end.
The task force will.
Insert a comma after mayor.
Advise the mayor, council, and planning commission, city planning commission. Well, you got the same thing down here. You, you got the same thing on that last line in the bullets. Yeah, you need to change it there too.
Well, if they're advising, I, I considered that, you could put it there, but at least if they're advising the city planning commission, it'll be part of their advisory.
I had a question, Jerry. In the second bullet item, prioritize needs of Holiday Island in two areas, one being community development, can you give us a definition of, of community development?
My definition of it would be, uh, looking at maybe some quality of life issues like additional parks or something like that, that would drive people to move here. And one of the, one of the areas we talk about is the growth in home construction, that anything that would, uh, drive that, I would consider community development. I, I don't mention that, but we, we could include, uh, another thing would be if we could entice, uh, some more healthcare providers, to re, to locate at least like they had in the past, a couple of days a week. That would, I would consider that community development. How about a library? Well, we've got the Dolly Parton imagination.
And as our, and as our community grows and expands with younger families, it might be a need to consider a school here instead of Eureka. Part of the master plan.
Yeah, I mean, that, that, that would be, you know, something that, that, that the planning commission would, would.
Well, but, but it'd be something you could investigate as well.
I mean, I, I have no idea, I mean, stakeholders can include a whole range of people that, you know, then they want to appoint one of the planning commissioners to, to sit on that, on that task force. And, and to be clear, this is not a economic development commission. It's strictly an advisory board. They have no weight of setting any policy or spending any money.
Is it, is it like creating a vision?
That's, that's exactly what it is, the, the vision and miss, mission.
Oh, I missed that.
Don't say mission.
Thank you.
Yeah, the, the way I look at it is, you know, what do you want to be when you grow up? And, you know, how do you, how are you gonna get there? What kind of revenue streams are you gonna need to be able to realize that dream?
If, if, I don't know if any of you have read the, uh, the, uh, City and Town publication that's got. I just about threw it yesterday. Yeah, and it's, it's got an article in there about community development and, and economic development. I didn't get to that.
You'll read it.
That's the nice, that's a good deal.
I mean, these is, this is exactly the activities for creating a master plan that the city planning commission is supposed to create, so, it's good.
And if you have any, you know, I don't want, I don't want names now or anything like that, but if you have anybody that you would like to suggest to be on this, um, task force, you know, I'm open to recommendations, so. Alright, any other discussion? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution twenty-two-one dash zero twenty-one.
One more amendment that Jerry mentioned as he read it in the first sentence, it should say city of Holiday Island.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh. Why can't I get those things?
It's funny how you read what it's supposed to say instead of what it does say.
They said it, and I just reread it, and I still read Holiday Island.
Alright, I will entertain a motion to approve resolution twenty-two-one dash zero twenty-one, as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Jerry made the motion, Lynn seconded it, is there any other discussion? Does this take a roll call vote? The resolutions.
Resolution.
Yeah, we have been.
Okay, we'll take a roll call.
Okay, council member Dumas.
Aye.
Council member Elwood.
Aye.
Council member Graves.
Aye.
Council member Mills.
Aye.
Council member Pittman. Motion passed, all in favor.
Alright.
Mr. Mayor?
Resolution twenty-two-one dash zero twenty-one has passed. Now I gotta get busy, put together a task force.
I, um, yeah.
I think there's, there's a lot of people that I think would be interested in working on this. Hopefully, uh, at least some of them, hopefully at least one has organizational skills. Alright, um, is there anybody on the Zoom meeting for public comments?
There are five participants, no hands are raised.
Any, anyone in the audience, the Zoom audience, have a comment? Raise your hand or unmute yourself, whatever.
Alright, hearing none, we'll move on to mayor and council member comments. I'll go first. I would like to have, um, a couple of workshops here in the next, I was gonna say the next month, but Wes isn't gonna be here.
Well, well, two weeks, just till after the fourth.
Okay, but then you're gonna be gone again.
The seventeenth to the twenty-first of July.
So somewhere before the seventeenth of July, but somewhere between two weeks from now and the seventeenth of July. So I'll, I'll pick a couple of days and make some suggestions as to when we do this. But I would act, I would like to have one workshop on, uh, setting up wards to, uh, see if there's any public interest in, uh, how the wards would be constructed, if any, anyone in the pub, out there in the public would like to participate in that. I don't, I don't anticipate that, that, um, the work that I've done so far is going to be affected at all by the new census. I don't think that, you know, the new census population number is so close to the old one that I don't expect that there's been a big population influx or outshift.
Shit.
From the wards as I have them, uh, proposed right now. And I think I sent you guys something on that at one time, they're kind of vertical slices through Holiday Island. So, you know, we were gonna wait until we had the new census data, but I don't really see the need to do that. I did take a stab at the ward descriptions, a legal description or a boundary description of the wards. I went back and reread them today, and I think they need a little bit of work. But we would need to take that over to the county and see if that's sufficient as, uh, boundary descriptions, if they can actually create their precincts off of the description that I'm putting forward. And, um, and that all may change if we have a workshop and, and the, the people want something totally different. And then I would like to have a workshop on, um, for lack of a better term, health and sanitation or code enforcement. We really need to start passing some ordinances. This isn't necessarily tied into the planning commission if we, because we don't have to attack, um, building standards and building codes right off the bat. We can start dealing with things like illegal dumping of garbage and maintaining your property in a safe, uh, manner and in a good repair and things like that. David Orr has offered to, he's the code enforcement officer at Green Forest, and is very knowledgeable in that, in that area. and is very knowledgeable in that, in that area. And he's on the BOC. And he has offered to put together a PowerPoint presentation for us to show us how code enforcement is done as far as, you know, when, once there's a violation, what do you do? And, you know, who has to be involved and, and stuff like that. And, and I think, I think that's going to, that's why I said earlier in the meeting that we may end up with a, an employee by the end of the year. Because once we pass an ordinance that has an enforceable, you know, elements to it, then we have to have somebody to enforce it, or we're no better off than the current planning commission with a bunch of rules and no, no way to enforce it.
And then don't we need a courtroom to prosecute it in?
That's, I think, what we'd have to figure out from David is if.
We, could I ask a question about that? When you're talking about a workshop, you're talking about a council workshop.
It would be, it would be a council workshop, but it would be open. It would be a public meeting, and we would entertain input, especially on the wards. I think that's a.
Well, I, I think it's mandatory on the wards. I, I, I think you, I think you would be, I, I don't think you're going to get through that.
I'd have to go back and read the statutes, I don't remember anything.
The workshop on code enforcement, I think the first one probably could be just us, but.
We can't have workshops that aren't open to the public.
No, they've got to be open to the public.
Well, I know they're all open, man.
But what's, what's your point?
The, whether it's virtual or.
Whether we, whether we entertain public comments or not.
Well, I think, no, you don't have to entertain public comments.
But I think it's a good idea that we do, better to have buy-in right from the start.
Well, I, I don't know. When, when you started out, I, I was thinking of a public forum, and that's, it's, it's a regular workshop. One time we, we had some when we first started. Then they're the same as a regular meeting, other than you just can't enact any business.
Yeah. So, yeah. Though, I think the workshop is going to be more, more presentation than anything. The, the actual ordinances, I mean, you can look at, you know, twenty cities our size, and the ordinances are.
Very similar.
They're practically the, the same. So drafting the ordinance itself is not a big deal. Knowing what's involved in enforcing them is the big deal. And that's, I think we need to take David up on his offer to do us, do a little tutorial on that.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Since you'd like to have at least one of these before July seventeenth, shouldn't we put it on the schedule at tonight?
I guess we could.
I know you have scheduling down here as the next item to talk about.
Subject to my wife telling me, why in the world did you do that?
You've already taken all your vacation.
Yeah, that's, yeah. Used up my vacation.
Well, just today, today is fifteenth, so you've got half a month in June.
The next city council meeting is the twentieth, so we could do it the night, the night of the, if Tuesday night works for everybody, we could do it the thirteenth.
Of July?
Of July. The one on wards.
The one on wards.
That's a workshop.
Sounds good.
And the code enforcement, then you're not going to get before the next council meeting. So that'd be after. Well, you're going to have to talk with David to find out we could do it. Okay, so you're going to set that at the thirteenth?
Yeah, the one on wards, we'll do July thirteenth at night or. At six o'clock at night, I think that's.
Good idea.
Works for everybody. And maybe, maybe we could do one, the one on the health and sanitation, then on the tenth of August, which again would be a week before the next council meeting. That would give David some time to put together a PowerPoint and.
There's a lot of interest in that.
Yeah, I don't think there's going to be much pushback on the ordinances, that people are waiting. I get quite a few calls about things like that. I don't get any calls about dogs anymore, that's a good thing. All right, any other council member comments?
I'd like to thank you for scheduling our meeting on my anniversary today.
Do you want to change it?
Happy anniversary, Linda. Today is the day.
Oh, today?
Oh, today's your anniversary.
Do we have to sing him a song or?
No.
How many years?
Eight years.
Eight years.
That's just the beginning.
The second comment I'd like to make is we, we need to, because we passed an ordinance last month about the city planning commission, I think we, we really do need to keep that on our agenda and get, get it done, get it formed, so we can get started.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
And I did make, I did talk to Tom Dees. He said he'd get back to me when he had time to sit down, and he has not gotten back to me, so I guess I'll have to give him another call.
Thank you.
Any other council member comments? If not, oh, rescue plan funds, you were going to.
Yes.
Give us a little.
Comment or do you have a report?
The only thing I was going to say is, is that the, it appears to me that the only way we're going to get any money, unless Wes has better information, is if we, if, if, if we put together a couple of shovel-ready projects, and I package that into some sort of a, a nice request and send it to Senator Ballinger and probably the municipal league, and I do have a contact inside the governor's office, Eddie Joe Williams. If I send it to those people and say that, and Harlan Bro, Representative Bro, and say, you know, we got, we got locked out on the, on the, you know, American Rescue Plan Act funds because of the way the law was written, but our need is just as great as anybody else's. Here's two projects that we would like to have funding for and see if we can get them. And to that end, I did meet with, with Bob Dyer and Lynn Lawrence Blood. And we came, we picked out two projects. One was rehabbing the hydro pillar. The hydro pillar is the only one of our water tanks that hasn't been rehabbed and put on a maintenance cycle.
Which one is that one?
The big one up by.
The park?
The park. The one that says Holiday Island on it.
Okay.
On the highway.
That way.
And. Don't, I don't remember what the second one was off the top of my head. I'd have to go back and look.
Sixty-seven miles a road.
No, the only three things that you can do, infrastructure, with the, the Rescue Plan Act funds restrict you on infrastructure to broadband and sewer and water.
So why can't we do something on broadband?
Because I don't have a, nobody here has any idea what to ask for.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, Lawrence Blood.
That's Lawrence on the line here. Yeah, Lawrence.
The second project was the booster pumps at well five.
Okay, thank you.
Do what?
Booster pumps at well five.
Booster pumps at well five. They're, they still work, but they're old. And if they did have to be repaired, it might not be possible because the bolts and everything are kind of rusted in place.
So hopefully, bring well two on.
I was going to ask about the, the PRV project. How close are we to finishing that, and is it in this year's budget? Oh, Lawrence, can you answer that? Are the PRV project?
Yes, currently we're.
Being finished?
And we'll be nearing about sixty percent after this year. We're concentrating first on the high-pressure zones and then moving to the medium-pressure zones. So after this year, I hope to have all the high-pressure zones covered.
So is, is, if we had, if we threw more money at that, could, is it not practical because you don't have enough staff to do it?
That's a very good way to put it, yes, ma'am.
Okay, I had a hunch.
Okay, so that's my input on it. We're, we're going to, as quickly as possible, get firm numbers on those two projects so that I can put it in a formal request and get it sent off before all the money is gone, because I tell you, it's going. There's people, people are, it's, it's a big money grab. All right, Wes?
Okay, well, and I'll just follow on along with that. Nothing contradictory to what you have recorded. I had a conversation with Stacy Crawford at the Department of Finance and Administration because we had received a request when this all started. They wanted our budget for, that was in effect January twenty-seventh of twenty twenty.
Which we didn't have.
Two oh two oh. And so they wanted the budget, so we submitted the budget for two thousand twenty-one and marked it as such. I got an immediate response, the request was for the twenty twenty budget, not twenty twenty-one budget. So we responded, well, we're a new city and we didn't have a twenty twenty budget. Then about four, five days later, we got this request for additional information that they said the Department of Treasury wanted. And so I called and discussed with her the fact that we had no budget in twenty twenty, and it wouldn't do really any good to submit that information, and we talked to her. And her, we came to a conclusion that it would be beneficial. In case there was any change, I submitted all the information that they wanted, even though I knew they were going to reject what we sent because we didn't have a twenty twenty budget. But it's been sent. Then in talking to her, she said, well, really? What you need to do then, along the line of Dan was talking, is you need to put a project together and submit a request for funding from the state and get an allocation from the state funds. I think the state got what, a billion, one and a quarter billion or something like that?
I heard one point nine billion.
So anyway, a huge amount of money. She said the only difference is, all this additional entitlement fund that all of these designated cities are hitting as a result of already being on the scent, a city at the census. That money is automatically set out and you get it. And they probably already have the first half, and then a year or two years, they get the second half. They get, they receive the money, but then you have to justify how you're, how you've spent it. And it was spent for approved purposes. If you don't do that, then you got to return the money. Okay, so there you get the money, and then you justify what you, what you spent it for. What we have to do is submit a request to state what we want to spend it for and have it approved, and then get the money, and then prove how we actually spent it.
Right, so Lawrence, if you're still on, we need those estimates or the quotes from the engineers, the sooner we get our request in, the better. Okay. We already talked on scheduling, we already talked about two workshops. Our next regular meeting is.
You said the twentieth.
The twentieth. And. No special meetings for now? Any announcements?
So I assume then on the twentieth, since I won't be here, it's just another, a council member can fill in my responsibilities.
Yes.
And if DJ's taking the minutes, I'll be back to review the minutes if I have notes.
You can always look at the Zoom.
Yeah.
Or even attend by Zoom.
Actually, you can attend by Zoom, you have no excuses.
Except it's going to depend, this wedding that we're going to is the nineteenth, which is a Monday.
Well, you're not going on the honeymoon, so.
But we'll be in Colorado. I don't know what our, what my options would be.
They, they have Zoom in Colorado.
Yeah.
Well.
The mayor appointed a replacement for you.
Yeah, we'll figure it out. All right, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Jerry moved to adjourn.
Second.
I thought we were going to be here a while yet. Lynn seconded it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we're adjourned.